City Council is now in session. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Culver.
Present.
Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
Councilmember Passson.
I am here.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Unless there are any objections, Councilmember Shrubnik will be excused. Councilmember Shrubnik is excused.
Councilmember Lutzis.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Kane.
Here.
Mayor Herbig.
Here.
That brings us to the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the city of Kenmore situated upon the ancestral lands of the Snohomish, Snoquamish, Sauk-Sauwattle, Duamish, Stillagwamish, Talelep, Saquamish, Muckleshoot, and other tribes who are part of the Coast Salish peoples. We recognize and express our deepest respect for their enduring stewardship and profound relationship with this land, which they have cherished and protected since time immemorial. We honor the First Peoples, acknowledge their vibrant cultures, and commit ourselves to learning from their wisdom in our journey to promote justice, equity, and mutual understanding. We pledge to stand alongside these communities in acknowledging past injustices and working towards a future that respects and celebrates the diverse heritage of this land. Now if you'd all please stand and join me in the flag slot. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Unless there are any objections, the agenda will stand approved as published. There are no objections. The agenda is approved. Brings us to the first of two proclamations that we have today. The first one is for Falls Prevention Awareness Week. Whereas every person, regardless of age or stage in life, deserves wellness, independence, and stability. And whereas falls remain the leading cause of injury and death and the most common cause of non-fatal injuries and hospital admissions for trauma in those aged 65 and older. And whereas the city of Kenmore is committed to raising public awareness and educating older adults, caregivers, families, and healthcare providers about fall risk factors and strategies for prevention. And whereas research shows that many falls can be prevented through evidence-based interventions, regular physical activity, home safety modifications, routine health checkups, including vision and hearing, and by encouraging open conversations with family members and support networks. And whereas Falls Prevention Awareness Week serves as an opportunity for individuals, families, and organizations to learn effective fall prevention strategies and cater safer, more supportive environments in the home and around the community. And whereas the city of Kenmore stands with community partners and organizations to reduce fall risks, empower older adults to live confidently and promote healthy aging without fear of falling. Now therefore, I, Nigel Herbig, mayor of the city of Kenmore, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim September 22nd to September 26th, 2025, to be Falls Prevention Awareness Week throughout the city of Kenmore. Our second proclamation today is for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a pervasive crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender identities, and socioeconomic backgrounds, and causes devastating and lasting harm to survivors, children, families, and the wider community. And whereas domestic violence continues to be one of the most underreported crimes in the nation, creating profound physical, emotional, and financial consequences for those impacted. And whereas the city of Kenmore remains committed to ending domestic violence and its destructive effects, working towards a future where every person can live in safety, dignity, and healthy relationships. And whereas the Kenmore City Council honors and uplifts survivors, recognizing their courage in breaking free from abuse and their strength in their journey of healing and rebuilding their lives. And whereas in solidarity, the city encourages residents to stop by City Hall to pick up a purple LED light and display them throughout October as a visible sign of awareness, unity, and support for survivors of domestic violence. And whereas together as a community, we can foster hope, resilience, and change by supporting prevention efforts, promoting education, empowering all individuals to speak out against abuse. We as a council and as a city commit to a community free from violence. Now therefore, I, Nigel Herbig, mayor of the city of Kenmore, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim October 25th, 2025, to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month throughout the city of Kenmore. City manager, where is the fun?
Well, we have two instances of fun for you this evening. The first is our very own Hank the Heron getting in the Congo line at this weekend's Oktoberfest. I was here at this point in time, and I can tell you the kids absolutely had a blast hanging out with Hank, getting their pictures taken. And overall, it was a really great event put on by the Chamber of Commerce. So we'll have more details for you on attendance and such later, but it was a very fun event. And then the second item is coming to you from our proud mother of Dominique. Melinda Merrill is our Finance and Administration Director. Her daughter Dominique, as you just saw flash on the screen, was featured on the national television coverage of the Seahawks game, as she is a Seahawk dancer this year. So she got some fun coverage on a nationwide stage, so fun stuff for a proud mama.
That's awesome. Yeah, Oktoberfest was a hoot this year. I wasn't able to make it to the Weir Dog races last year. And we made a point of going this year, and I have to say, it was a wild half hour. If you haven't gone, it's worth going. It's hilarious. But those are great. That brings us to public comment. We want to welcome folks to the council's meeting. We ask the folks to address the comments to the mayor and council. Folks are going to have three minutes. The clerk will call your name when it's your turn. To make every person feel welcome and safe here, please refrain from booing, clapping, heckling, yelling, or other interruptions. And please note under Washington state law, public comment time may not be used as support for opposed candidates or ballot measures. Thank you for keeping your remarks focused on city business. The meeting is recorded for transparency. Thank you for being here and for sharing your input respectfully. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We have no one signed up for comments this evening.
All right, I could have saved myself some reading there.
Apologies.
It's okay. I should have asked, I guess. That brings us to the consent agenda. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
They're moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Which brings us to the business agenda. Item number one, fee in lieu of providing affordable housing units for residential development in the R4 and R6 zones presented by Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director Debbie Bent, Principal Planner Todd Hall, and a Regional Coalition for Housing staff for discussion and direction.
Good evening, council. Joining staff this evening, we have Mike Stanga, who is a planner with a regional coalition for Arch. Mike helped develop this recommendation. So we're here this evening to look for council direction on a proposed fee in lieu rate for affordable housing for residential development in the R4 and R6 zones as an alternative to meeting onsite affordability requirements. And this is in line with the ordinance that council adopted in June for middle housing regulations. The affordable housing regulations were part of that package that was adopted by ordinance. And we said we would be coming back later to establish the fee. So the affordability requirements, as well as the fee in lieu, will not go into effect till January of 2026. And the adopted fee will then be included in the fee schedule. So there's background information provided in the agenda bill, which outlines the code that was adopted. But Mayor, if it's okay, I will ask Mike to go through a very brief PowerPoint presentation to again provide the context and how that fee in lieu was derived. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. And Mayor, members of the council, it's great to see you again. I will try to go quickly, but feel free to interrupt at any time if you have a question. So just as a reminder about how the middle housing affordability requirements work. In the R4 and R6 zones, zoning now require or will require 10% of the total number of new units in a development to be affordable. That is, all units that are 750 square feet or larger. The affordability level would be 80% of area median income if they're owner occupied and 50% of median if renter occupied. Now, if the number of units in the development is fewer than 10, then naturally 10% will be a fraction. And so in that case, the code will provide or provides that the developer builder may pay a fee in lieu of that fraction. So for example, in a project that was four units, that would result in .4 units payable by a fee that is meant to be equivalent to the value of the affordable proportioned value of a full affordable unit. Now, there's one caveat to all this, which is that by state law, if the if the project occurs further than a quarter mile from a major transit stop, if the builder wants to build more than two, that is, three or four units on a lot, then they will be required to provide a unit, an affordable unit on the lot. So that effectively overrides the 10% requirement. There's no fee in lieu of that option. Now, so back to the fee, and how did we go about thinking about the value of this? And we looked at a number of different building prototypes and scenarios for for middle housing types and also conventional single-family detached units. And what we found was that a number of them, including single-family housing in a typical case, would not be feasible in these economics. And so for using this hypothet- I think this hypothetical case here, where the sale proceeds do not match the or exceed the development costs. And we built in a developer profit and developer fee into that. So in order to be feasible, a project would have to have proceeds exceeding those total development costs. And in this example, they do not sell single-family homes. In our analysis, we're not going to be feasible. And similarly, typical duplexes, triplexes were not feasible. However, a number of middle housing prototypes were shown to be feasible, including this one with cottage housing. So the sale proceeds exceed the developer's requirement for recovering costs and profits. And that leaves some what we call residual profits that could support an affordable housing requirement. In other words, the upzoning for middle housing adds value to the land, to development potential, that not only makes the project feasible, but exceeds that feasibility threshold. And that's where the justification for requiring some affordability comes from. I'm not showing all of the prototypes that we ran here, but just a sample of them. The others are in previous council packets and staff reports. But this is just to kind of give you a flavor of the analysis that we did that led us to derive the recommended $6 per square foot for owner occupancy. I need to point out one error of mine here. I had four cottages in .4 affordable units. That was, that should have been three cottages and .3 affordable units there. But in that example, there were three cottages, 1,500 square feet apiece. That was a feasible project. To estimate the value of the affordable housing on that project, we took the difference in price between market rate price for a thousand square foot unit and an affordable unit at 80% of median and came up with about $160,000. And if you, so that's the value of one affordable unit. If you take .4 of that and then divide that result by the 4,500 square feet total in the project, then that's how we get to, sorry, .3, as I said. That's how you get to the $10.65 per square foot. That's, we did that with, as I said, with eight or nine prototypes. And the midpoint of those prototypes came to a little under $6 per square foot. And that's how we derived that recommendation. For renter occupancy, it's generally the same principle. But in this case, and granted, there, we don't expect to see very many rental products in the middle housing sphere, but it could happen. So in this example, for three-bedroom homes of a total of 4,000 square feet, then the market rate, net operating income, that is, the rent minus the operating expenses, was about $18,000 a year per unit. And the equivalent for an affordable unit would have been about $13,840 a year. If you take the difference of that and estimate it over the life of the housing unit, you can divide by what's called a cap rate, or referred to as capitalizing that amount. And that came to $81,000. And then, as we did earlier, taking .4 affordable units and dividing by the total square footage gave us a little over $8 a square foot. Now, that's really technical, and I apologize for all the math, but we can walk through it more if you like. I just didn't want to keep it, I just didn't want it to be mysterious. So as I said, we recommend a fee per square foot for all the new units in that are less than 1,750 square feet, $6 a square foot if it's owner occupied, or $8 a square foot if it's renter occupied. The difference coming from the fact that the owner occupancy is 80% of median and the affordability of renter occupancy is 50% of median. And so these fees can increase or decrease annually according to the CPI. City council has an authority to reset the fee rates, but the code says that you shouldn't do it any more often than every two years. And what happens to the money? So city staff would collect the money along with other development fees and deposit that into a city account. If the staff chooses to, you can direct that money then to the Arch Trust Fund, where we, Regional Coalition Housing maintains a fund of contribution. We pool money contributions from all cities, including Kenmore, every year. And our executive board makes recommendations on funding projects every year. Ultimately, the authority for how to spend your city of Kenmore contributions always comes back to the city council. So you don't lose any spending authority on that money. But if you choose to keep that in your own accounts locally, then Arch can also support you in helping to put together project proposals and invite proposals to, that the city might invest that money in directly. That's the end of my presentation. I'd happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions? Councilor Lutzis.
Yeah, thank you very much for this. There's a couple of things. I have a question and then a comment. And my first question is, could you break down really quickly the total developer costs in that chart that you had earlier in this presentation? Sort of what goes in?
Well, generally, it's, there are land acquisition costs. And what we were doing here was to, we looked at the sales that occurred of of single-family homes that were most likely to be redeveloped for middle housing. And that means lots smaller than an acre that had homes that were built before 1980. Those tend to be smaller homes that that are less valuable. And and we took the median cost of acquisition cost of that surveying those properties. Then there are hard costs for construction, soft costs, as I call them, for professional fees and taxes and impact fees and everything, engineering and so forth. And everything that goes into developing a project such as this. And then we netted out of the sale proceed, sorry, you asked about development costs. So, yeah.
Thank you. And then I just have a comment for Debbie really quick. This question came into my mind, so I don't expect an answer. But would it be possible to potentially get an estimate on what the cost is internally to us of administering these fees? How much staff time that might take? Or, you know, maybe it's negligible, but again, I don't expect you to have an answer. That's just one thing I want to pose to you for a future date.
Okay, so these fills, fees would be collected at building permit times. So they would be collected along with other fees. So the development services staff typically do that. So these fees would then be directed into the city's affordable housing account, which we currently have set up for that purpose. So in terms of how much time will it take to administer, it shouldn't take that much time. Obviously, for the first few projects that come through, it's kind of getting used to that those might take a little bit longer to do. And we may have to sort of work with Mike just to make sure that we're doing the calculation correctly. But I don't think it would take an enormous amount of time to administer this fee.
All right, thank you.
And we did meet with Samantha Loyac last week to go through that, and she seemed satisfied about that.
Councilor Marshall. Why is it recommended that the council not review the schedules of the rates sooner than every two years?
I think just because it takes time to put the model together and the calculations together. And also, we wanted to give some certainty to the development community about what those fees would be.
Any other questions? Councilor Passson.
Thank you for this and for all the math. I appreciate it. I just wanted to clarify, because I think I misheard having to do with the state law and being greater than or less than a quarter mile from transit. Can you remind me whether the lots are, the lots that are affected are within a quarter mile, not outside of a quarter mile? Is that, is that correct?
The lots that are within a quarter mile have a right to build up to four units. So their only affordability requirement would, or obligation would be the 10%.
Right.
Further from a quarter mile, they only have a right to build two units. But they may build up to four units if they include an affordable unit on the lot.
Perfect. I'm so glad I asked. Thank you. And then I just have a, honestly, a question for our planners. Have you heard anything from the development community feedback regarding? Have you heard anything from the development community feedback regarding this, these recommendations that we should know about?
When the code is approved by council, we did send this to the Master Builders Association. You receive comments from the Master Builders Association. I think the fee that we've established for Kenmore is reasonable and is, it is below some of the other fees in, in other jurisdictions. So we showed them the math, we showed them how it was calculated, and it, it's a reasonable fee. I mean, again, any, any fees that are put forward, there's obviously going to be some pushback for, but we tried to assure them that this was a reasonable calculation and a reasonable fee.
I appreciate that, it's, it's reassuring to know that we are within range of our neighbors. That's helpful to know, thank you.
Any further questions? Comments? Do you have the direction you feel like, that you need, or are you asking for a vote tonight?
I'd appreciate a vote so it's clear, thank you.
Okay, sorry, I just want to check then. So unless there are any additional questions, the chair would entertain a motion to adopt the fee-in-lieu of providing affordable housing units for residential development in our four and our six zones as published in the agenda.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilor Lutzis.
Yes, I think we've, this has come up once or twice before as we slowly talked about this, this topic. And, and again, I think we're all in agreement here that housing, affordable housing, we're in dire need of that. It's just, you know, what is the best way to get there? And does putting on another, you know, fee, does that help us in the longer run? Does that discourage development? I, that, that comment, I think, has been floated a couple of times right now. And, and I do appreciate, again, the reminder that the master builders, you know, said that it was reasonable. I would be, you know, curious to know what, in addition to the total development costs, again, the, the opportunity costs too, is if it does cost them a little bit less to develop north of the county line or elsewhere, you know, does, does this somehow still discourage as much development as we can get in our city for this? Because I think, I think we're all of the same understanding that the affordable housing crisis that we have is a, you know, it's a market issue, we lack capacity for the demand that there is, and just how do we encourage that capacity? So I just wanted to point that out, and I would be curious to know going forward too, is if this is approved tonight, if we can watch those numbers. I know it's really hard to do since the housing market goes up and down, but just to see, you know, what sort of impact this has and what sort of feedback we're getting from the development community. And if, you know, this is, I, I, this feels so small that I, it's hard for me to imagine this. But again, I just want to voice this too because it's something that we've talked about already, is that if, if we see that there's, you know, some discouragement, some developers are discouraged by it and going elsewhere, maybe, you know, having that conversation again. Just as, you know, seeing if there's, there's a, a better approach to addressing this crisis. But again, I just wanted to point that out once more since that's already come up a couple of times in our discussions. And just, you know, put that on the table for folks to, to keep in mind.
Councilor Marshall. Thanks, Councilmember Lutzis. In a rare instance of myself feeling the, or seeing something of the need for flexibility for developers, very rare instance, I have concerns, share some of those concerns as to whether this is going to actually accomplish the goal that we're aiming for, or, as you say, discourage something in the real word, world of development. Probably not to the extent that I would vote against it for that reason. But for that reason, I would want the council to review, be able to review the matter more frequently than once every two years. Maybe things will develop quickly, maybe they generally don't develop at all, maybe development pace is not quick enough in that time period, but it might happen. Something might happen to change the market. I think we ought to keep that flexibility so we can be responsive to our citizens. Any further comments? All right. Councilor Assassin.
Yeah, just one more comment in response, I think, which is that we have had the benefit of our planning commission and their good brains on this. We've had a very productive study session on this. We've had our in-house staff planners, we've had Arch on this. And I, I feel ready to make a choice. And I also think that just in terms of two years, it does, it does take a period of time in order to garner data that would mean something. And so personally, I think two years seems reasonable.
Deputy Mayor.
I, I agree with Councilmember Assassin that two years seems to be reasonable at this point due to, you know, we, we will need to be able to gather some data, but I, yeah. And this has come before us several times. I really appreciate the clear presentation today. And I think I have the concerns that were raised by Councilmember Lutzis and Marshall. And I also think that we've come to what is the most balance, you know, our decision at the last meeting, I felt, came to what was most fair in this situation. And recognizing, you know, the state decisions have an impact on, on this overall and what we can do. So I do think it's important for us to keep an eye on this. I do care about this concept of being in service of creating more affordable housing. So I hope that that is the benefit of the decision that we move forward with today on this.
Any further comments? Yeah, I want to thank staff, I want to thank staff, I want to thank Arch for all of your help with this. I know there was a lot of back and forth and a lot of changes were made as we went through this. And I think we've landed, hopefully, in a place that will encourage, encourage more affordable housing, or at least get us to a place where folks, where we're able to contribute more meaningfully towards Arch Trust Fund, to build more affordable housing in the region. While encouraging, I think, slightly smaller, more affordable market rate housing at the same time, so. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Mayor, if I may read the full motion that's in the agenda bill before we take the vote.
Please.
The motion is to authorize a fee-in-lieu rate effective January one, twenty twenty-six, of six dollars per square foot for providing affordable housing units for residential development in the R four and R six zones and for rental development projects at a rate of eight dollars per square foot. Is that correct?
That's correct, thank you for clarification.
Thank you. Councilmember Marshall.
No.
Councilmember Culver?
Yes.
Councilmember Assassin?
Yes.
Councilmember Lutzis?
No.
Deputy Mayor Kane?
Yes.
Mayor Herbig?
Yes, the motion passes four to two. Thank you. That brings us to the second and last item on our business agenda, Kenmore Municipal Code Title Twelve Update, presented by Engineering Director John Vicenti. Forward discussion.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Sorry, I'm getting over a cold, so I may be interrupting with a cough here and there. And you get to listen to my husky voice. Tonight, I'll be talking about updates to the road standards and then some cleanup clarifications made to chapters twelve point zero five, twelve forty, twelve fifty, and twelve fifty-five of the municipal code. These are items for discussion today. There will be no decision required from you tonight. And also, I'm going to be going through these pretty quickly. Most everything is just very general, simple things. I will take a break after each slide in case you have any questions, because there are quite a lot of slides. So twelve point five is just the general provisions. And here I added a clarification for city engineer, which cites RCW thirty-six seventy-five. And I clarified that the board is, meaning the city council. I changed the definition for our special use permit to public use permit. That's our permit for using public spaces. And we also have a special use permit noted in KMC eighteen, and I wanted to avoid the confusion with the two permits. Any questions? Twelve forty is the permis, is a first use on real property change thing from special use to public use. I'm going to assume there's no questions on that one. Twelve fifty, I'm changing the road standards name from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five to reflect the changes in the road standards. Real hard. Twelve fifty-five is a little more substantial changes. Within the twelve twenty-five, we talk about the utilities in the right-of-way. And we are fairly silent on how the official communication should be with the utilities in relation to utility-related projects. And so we are noting that our official communication with them will be through the National Joint Utilities Notification System. It's a system that all utility companies utilize to communicate with themselves. And so we have jumped on that bandwagon, we have full access, and we're now using that as our official notification system. We al, we also added in some vegetation management requirements for the utilities. Right now, we are silent on what to do around their safety hazard zone. And so I've added some information into the code saying that they need to maintain the vegetation and what the requirements are around those safety areas. Any questions? So the road standards, I'm going to go briefly through some of the major changes of the road. There were a lot of resource updates in the, in the standards related to just changes over time. Did some updates or an add additional municipal code reference changes. Updated some engineering industry standard changes, so grammatical spelling, format, flow edits, those general things. Covering, this presentation is just going to be covering the significant changes. The attachment in your agenda bill lists all the changes that were made within there if you want to know a more comprehensive, if you want a more comprehensive look as to what was changed. In chapter one, we are adding middle housing to the definitions to conform with the changes that are being made to, with the state law. We are adapting the American National Standard Practice for roadway lighting, published by the Illuminating Engineering Society. That's kind of the lighting standard now that everyone's using, especially with future sound energy. Any questions? Chapter two is the general requirements in the road standards. We modified, so within the road standards, people are required to do frontage improvements with certain types of development. We modified one of the exemptions where a single-family resident is exempt, a single-family resident project is exempt from providing road standards if they are replacing an existing single-family home within forty-eight months of its demolition. Current standard says twelve months, so we're just giving them a little bit more time to process their paperwork, get their permits in, and do all of that kind of stuff. We've also removed the identification that that only applies to local roads. We're applying it to all roads, so we're not making a distinction as to where that residential house lies. And then we also added a note in there that the city does require, or has an allowance that we can require a fee-in-lieu. We're making it also possible for us to require it if a development is occurring within a planned city project area so that we don't have any conflicts with future development. Our projects that might have to get ripped out, so we can just require the fee-in-lieu.
Yes, Councilor Marshall. Does the SFR have to then, after the, after the forty-eight months, do the frontage improvements?
If the applicant has not submitted a complete application within forty-eight months of the demolition of the home, they would have to do frontage improvements, yes.
If they get it in before, they don't have to?
Correct.
Okay.
No changes to chapters three or four. Chapter five deals with private roads, driveways, and the parking design. We allowed, we're putting an, putting an allowance to allow street numbers to be within the right-of-way, not, so it's visible. So if you have houses and you cannot see the house, you can't see the address, and it's really hard to see, I'm giving the allowance to be able to provide those in the right-of-way so it's easy for emergency vehicles to identify the home down that private road. Pairing middle housing requirements with single-family resident requirements. Reducing driveway widths to ten-foot minimum when two or more driveways are allowed. Within the code, we allow two driveways if you have more than a hundred foot of frontage on your property. We're also restricting the maximum driveway width, cumulative width, to twenty feet. So if they get two driveways, they can have a maximum of twenty feet for both those driveways. Any questions?
Councilor Assassin.
By driveway, are we assuming that's an impervious surface?
Yes, technically driveways are considered impervious surface. Once they get driven on, they get compacted, they become an impervious surface.
So not necessarily gravel or?
It would still include gravel, yes.
It would include gravel, okay, thank.
Chapter six, road design, again, and here we're pairing middle housing with single-family residents. We create a maximum curb-to-curb width of twenty-two feet at intersections to reduce the crossings, to improve safety. And then we also added a requirement that pedestrian scale lighting is required for any installation of rectangular rapid flashing beacons, so the enhanced crossing. So when we add those flashing beacons, we're now requiring that pedestrian scale lighting be added to enhance safety visibility for pedestrians. Any questions? Chapter eight, roadside features, illumination design. We changed the illumination design to be required by PSC, including installation. That's now a requirement by PSC since they own and operate our systems. They've now said that they want to design and install all of the lights. So we've had to make that change to our standards. We made some changes to the landscaping requirements to comply with the latest industry recommendations. We added additional native shrubs to our acceptable plant list. We also included some irrigation requirements and identified where irrigation is required. The list we have there is where we currently have irrigation installed in general, so. Any questions? Chapter nine, surface treatments. We are requiring a fog seal after new pavement placement. We've found that putting in a fog seal extends the life of the pavement, much like the slurry seals that we're doing. So anywhere where we don't have striping, we're going to make them come back in and do a fog seal. Chapter ten, drainage. We're requiring that storm drainage systems be removed and not abandoned in place. We do have an allowance for some circumstances to leave that, but in general, they have to remove the storm system. We also put restrictions on storm drainage placements under sidewalk and within our planting strips. And then chapter eleven, utilities. We better define what a boring slash receiving pit, that to be no larger than eight square feet, and that's related to pavement repair. So a lot of the utilities will just dig a small hole and make fixes. We've defined that if it's larger than a certain size, they're going to have to treat it like a trench. Any questions? Okay, so appendix A identifies the streets' road classifications. We did make some changes a couple of years ago through the state. So our, so seventy-fifth, one ninety-seventh, one fifty, one eighty-fifth corridor and Arrowhead Drive were changed from local roads to collectors. See the little arrows there, and it's the, the dashed lines, the red dashed lines. Northeast one hundred and eighty-first, northeast one seventy-fifth, those were changed from collector to a minor arterial. And then sixty-fifth Avenue, that small little stretch between one eighty-first and SR five-two-two, was changed from a minor arterial to a collector. And then Lake Point Drive was removed from the list. These changes are, they don't really change too much the function of the road. The function of the road changed the name of the road. So the volumes, the use, and everything made the change. And what that does is that also, by changing the names, that makes the And what that does is that also by changing the names, that makes them eligible for grant funding. So because they, since they have more, more vehicles for use, they become more available for grant funding. And then the state asked us to remove Lake Point Drive because it'd been on there as pending for so many years that they wanted to take it off, so we had to take it off.
Hopefully we'll be adding that right back in, in the next.
Yes, hopefully. Any questions?
John, I have one just comment, I emailed you about this earlier. But I was out in the Uplake community and something that's always struck me about Uplake is that, and it, you know, I assumed, well, when I was looking through this map here, I noticed that all of the roads up there are local roads. But there are multiple roads up there that also have a yellow center line and definitely give the impression of being more than just a local road. And I'm talking specifically about one eighty first, one eighty second, fifty eighth avenue, sixtieth avenue in the Uplake neighborhood. And, you know, I've talked to folks up there who have complaints about speeding and all that sort of thing. And from where I am, from, you know, just my experience as a driver, that center line does change a driver's expectation for what is and isn't acceptable on the road and all of that. If we're gonna continue to keep, and those roads are all local access only generally, is there a reason why we have those center lined? Because it just seems to encourage people to go a little bit quicker, I think.
So those particular streets, I do not know the reason why they would have a center line. There are a variety of reasons why you could have a center line. You could have them to help designate, you know, the lane, keeping people in their lane for safety. It could be there for sight distance. If people can't see who's coming up down the road, you wanna make sure they stay in their lane so that they don't hit an oncoming car. They could be there for directional, just to make sure that people, if they can't see where the road is going, they know where they're going. Lighting issues, you better to see the pavement if it's, if it's too dark, there could be a lot of reasons for it. We would have to look at each one of those roads to see if the striping is actually necessary. I don't recall if we've actually looked at all of our roads to determine whether or not they should be done. I would need to talk to our traffic engineer, see if he's actually done that, I don't remember.
Yeah, I just, I can't recall many other, I can't recall any other like local roads that have striped center line, just, and I'm probably missing something. Like I'm, I'm sure I'm missing something in the city, cuz there's a lot, many lane miles and I haven't walked all, well, I've walked them, but I couldn't tell you, you know, off the top of my head. But these ones really jump out at me, especially coupled with the complaints I heard from folks about speeding in that neighborhood in particular. So that's just something I wanna flag for, for staff and, and hope that we can, you know, the center line may not be the reason for it, but we may wanna look at other ways to calm, calm drivers through, cuz they get a lot of people cutting through down one eighty second, then taking the right to get on five twenty two to jump around traffic. They get a lot of passers through that way. And it's creating some dangerous situations for kids walking to the bus and for people just trying to get out of their driveways and things like that. It seems, it sounds like it can be pretty frustrating and, and dangerous. And so we might wanna take a look at those areas. Deputy Mayor?
I wanna thank our mayor for bringing that up. It, it opened some creative thoughts. I do think that those roads in particular do need to be visited at some point in time for traffic calming. And I, as much as I think it's nice not having sidewalks or tree, you know, like, we're used to that neighborhood as it is today, but there, there, there are probably some great opportunities for traffic calming on those streets in particular that our mayor brought up. I drive through there fairly frequently and have those same concerns. They're very wide streets and the connection to five twenty two and sixty first does create sort of a through fare feeling on those roads. So I just wanna thank you, Mayor, and thank you. I just, I just, I came up with ideas of how it could be really beautiful, but anyway, I just wanna say thank you for bringing that, cuz I drive through there regularly.
Yeah, and I, and I would remind you that we do have our local road safety plan that looks at our roads and determines what, what the needs are. And we're all aware how thorough our traffic engineer is. And so I'm pretty sure that if we have an issue out there, he knows about it. So, but when I get a chance, I will touch base with him. And I'm pretty sure that if there is a need out there, he's aware of it and it's in the plan. So, but I can definitely double check and just make sure, so. So within the road standards, we have all our cross sections. One of the major changes that I've made is, as a recommendation under the most recent manual of uniform traffic control, bike lanes are now recommended to become separated from the roadway. And so I've changed the road standards to make the bike lanes, elevated bike lanes, putting them adjacent to the sidewalk and off of the street. So in a general sense, pretty much saying that bikes are now going to be made a part of the pedestrian area and not part of the vehicular area. This does not mean that we're gonna be start ripping everything out and building it to that. It just means is where we have the opportunity, we will incorporate these changes, have transitions and provide where we can a more comfortable and safer place for cyclists. So all of the locations where we've had bike lanes adjacent to vehicles, they've now been moved to be adjacent to sidewalks, so.
Mr. Sessom?
Is this specific to non-motorized bikes or is this all, you know, all vehicles that are not cars? Because we're, you know, basically what we're seeing is pretty speedy, things that look a whole lot like motorbikes, literally lapping the traffic going up Simon's Road, you know, the cars are going thirty and the e-bikes are going forty. It's kind of remarkable right now.
So right now, they would be bike lanes to be used the same way our current bike lanes are to be used. One of the things that we are looking at right now is our alternative modes transportation system and looking at what kind of code language, what types of uses we wanna have within the city. I've got some, I've got my intern doing some research and looking at what the other jurisdictions are doing and trying to figure out what we want here in Kenmore. We do know that there are issues, we've heard about it, there are certain laws, but how do you enforce those laws? There are certain rules that we would love to see, but how do you enforce those rules? It, it's complicated, you know, I mean, it's, it's, you know, there's the age limits on certain bicycle, certain e-bikes, but how do you enforce that? You know, that's the, that's the, the conundrum we have is, is we're running into a situation where, what do we do? And so we're doing some research, trying to figure out how we do, how we can, what we can do and how we would, you know, be successful.
I totally appreciate that that is a can of worms. And, you know, I'm all in favor of having fewer cars and I love that you're doing that work, so I, I apologize. Just when I see bike lane, I, you know, we just, we're, clearly there's that work to be done, so thank you for telling me it's underway.
Yeah, yeah, we're finding that no matter what we do, there's always more work to be done. Another thing is looking at changes to sixty eighth avenue. As you remember, we've put in these wonderful bike lanes on sixty eighth, Juanita, across the bridge, but there are no bike lanes from one hundred and eighty fifth to one hundred and seventy fifth. And I felt we were due to try and connect these two pieces of infrastructure so that people can travel the full length of Kenmore without having to try and figure out how to get from point A to point C. And so what I looked at doing was adding a similar structure to what we have crossing the West San Amish Bridge. On the left, we've got a fig, a configuration from northeast one seventy fifth to northeast one eighty first, where we are widening the right of way on the west side of the street to add an eight foot section, very similar to what's crossing the bridge. No changes to the east side, the need would come from the west side. So it would require potentially some property acquisition, but I'm not positive. I haven't done the full math, I think that we almost have enough there. From when the five twenty two project went through and they did a lot of acquisition, there's some excess space there. But I wanted to get something in our standards in case there is redevelopment at that location that we have a mechanism to require dedication to get these facilities built. From one eighty first, or, um, yeah, and this is the same thing going from five twenty two to one eighty, from five twenty two to one eighty first. It would be the same thing, it would be future development, dedication, that sort of thing would have to happen in that section. From northeast one hundred eighty first to one eighty fifth, I am repurposing the parking lane. We already have full buildout in that section. I really don't see redevelopment happening ever again in a very long time through there. So the only way that I could see to get cyclists through there would to be repurposing the parking lanes. So still maintaining parking on the east side of the street, but putting cyclists on the west side all the way to one hundred eighty fifth and then creating a transition to where they separate going north of one hundred eighty fifth. Any questions? Another change that I'm looking at is on one hundred eighty first. Right now, the current standard is parking on both sides of the street with shared use in the roadway with psych, with vehicles, bicycle shared use. I'm looking at doing a cycle track along the south side of the street from sixty first all the way to seventy third to create a bicycle connection between sixty first and seventy third. Right now, we don't have much of a connection for the folks coming from the north end of the city to connect to our downtown. And I wanted to create some sort of connection so that the people that are coming can go, oh, got a path, got a way to go, without having to mingle with the vehicles. This, of course, would take away parking on the south side that exists east of sixty eighth and any small limited parking that exists west of there. I do wanna say that we have been getting some concerns about local residents, about losing parking on the south side of the street from sixty first to sixty second, where there's currently parking there, which is one of the reasons why I'm retaining the parking on the north side to try at least keep some parking at that location. Right now, there isn't a good place to park in that area, but future development, yes. What I've proposed here does not necessarily mean we have to implement it immediately. It's something that we could implement once we have the infrastructure built. I just wanted to make sure that we have the space provided for it for whenever that future does come.
Councilor Luthus?
Yeah, I was trying to picture this in my head and then I remembered that pretty substantial hill between sixty first and sixty fifth, those bikes trying to go up there. But, I mean, I, you know, I'm all for keeping them safe. But that, that, thinking of that picturing that hill did raise a question, is that currently a high use roadway by bicyclists?
You know, we don't have a whole lot of bicycle use data. We actually have to get special cameras out there, which we don't have. And so we don't take a whole lot of data, it's usually on demand. What we have found though is when you build it, they will come. We did not have a lot of cyclists on Juanita before the work, now that we have it, we've got a lot of cyclists on Juanita. So my suspicion is, is once we, once we make the facilities available, people will come. I guarantee you, when we're done with the improvements on sixty first, you will see pedestrians walking on sixty first. So it's, that's just my, my gut feeling tells me that if we build it, they're gonna use it. If you don't have the facility there, they're not gonna use it cuz there's nothing to use.
Yeah, all right, thank you, I was just curious, thank you.
Other questions? Deputy Mayor?
I am glad you're giving attention to sixty first to sixty second. I do see, especially on the weekends and evenings, several cars. The, the street from sixty first all the way up to sixty second has cars in it. So I really think that maintaining that for those residents is really important. So I just wanna call attention to that. I know this is kind of future looking, but without having something for those residents to park in, I think being the hill, being so near Burt Gilman Trail, like, it is a steep hill. It's, I, I have a hard time imagining people choosing to go up that hill rather than going down the Burt Gilman Trail, for example. But I do think having consistent facilities is important. But we do have a community of residents that are very concerned about that strip of parking. And as long as we, I think it's important for us to maintain that, thank you.
And then appendix C is our street tree lists. We added some new trees to expand the variety. We added a few hardy new versions that do well in the urban environment. Added, the, the ones that we added are also drought tolerant and they do well in urban corridors. We removed our sugar maples as they were recommended for removal due to their sensitivity to pollution and compacted soils. So our consultant said to get rid of them. Any questions? Standard details, so I'm just gonna cover, we made a lot of, I made a lot of change to the standard details, things that you really won't see. But I am gonna provide some visual reference of a few things that I changed, just to, to show you kind of what we did. So I added a new detail, structural soil for our downtown use area. If you haven't noticed, I have noticed this, that we're starting to see some panel uplifting in downtown, which is indicative of tree roots. And so what I've decided is that we, and this is, was recommended by our consultant, is that we should probably be putting in structural soil under our sidewalks to help prevent that from happening, because we don't have a lot of growing medium in the downtown area, because it's just all pavement. And so I added this to the spec. It is a bit more costly for developers and for the city, but in the long run, I think it's better for the survivability of our trees and the sustainability of our sidewalks.
What exactly is structural soil?
It's essentially angular rock and topsoil. Whereas just topsoil is clay, loamy material and sand, so.
Okay, thanks.
And I also increased our downtown tree grade from a four by four to an eight by four. Little bit more space for the tree to grow in, get more water from more rainwater and whatnot, so, you know, nothing too exciting. Any questions? So also, I replaced our paint with profiled plastic on the bike buffer. So the driving, the, the vehicle side, we called out originally to be paint, we changed it to profiled plastic. We found that that's one, more durable and two, it lets people know, hey, get off the buffer, you're intruding on the bike side. And so we're finding that it's very effective, people are staying off of it and we're not having as much wear on our facility. We added vertical delineators to the bike lanes at the intersections. You've seen those fancy little things, they are performing quite nicely. We're gonna be looking to use them in other locations, they seem to be working really well. Our operations crew seems to like them, so they've been successful. Any questions?
Councilor Luthus?
The profiled plastic, that's the sort of the ridged.
Thum, 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 thum.
Awesome. I, I just have to say, as somebody who walks quite a bit, I love that because as a pedestrian, you can hear when the car starts to veer a little bit closer. So just from a pedestrian and bicycle safety standpoint, I, it's incredibly, incredibly helpful. So, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
And then we changed our speed humps from a single to a three hump configuration. This is more friendly to emergency vehicles. Oh, anybody had any questions on that, sorry? And then the elevated bike lane, you saw that in the plans. I had to create a detail to show how transitions are gonna look. So the elevated bike lane is, again, gonna be adjacent to the sidewalk. That is your approaching intersection, how it's gonna look, and that's gonna be your leaving intersection side. That's your bike path. That's your sidewalk. Your curb and gutter. That's your planning strip. That is gonna be the ramp to the road and ramp from the road to get you back from, back onto the bike lane. That's gonna be a painted buffer, very similar to what you just saw on the previous slide, the plastic profile and the paint. Vertical delineators will exist on the approaching intersection, but not on the leaving intersection. So this is kind of what I anticipate it'll look like. So this is kind of what I anticipate it'll look like at our intersection. So the, the bicyclist will be adjacent to sidewalk, but they'll go into the road as they cross. That allows them to be more visible to vehicles as they get into the intersection because cyclists tend to go a little bit faster than pedestrians and a little bit harder to see. So we want to get them visible to vehicles, but also we don't want them to conflict with pedestrians as they wait to cross the street. So we want to provide that safety for the pedestrians that are standing at the intersection, but also make the cyclists more visible to the vehicles. So. Any questions?
Councilor Lutzus.
Will there be signage or markings either on the path or elsewhere for bicyclists to remind them to yield pedestrians to pedestrians who are there or?
Yeah, I haven't given that, hadn't thought about that. Well, do typical signage along there like you would see anywhere else? You know, signs that say, you know, bicyclist this side, pedestrian this side. I'd have to look and see if there would be a need for any type of signage like that. I don't know. Typically, we, it's, it's you stand your side, stay on my side. You would have the yielding if it's a intermixture.
Of course. I guess my concern is, at least with the departing side, if you, with that planter strip kind of in the way, depending on what sort of vegetation is there. If you have a pedestrian kind of on the edge and a bicyclist cruising through, if there could be potentially some sort of intersection.
No, I don't think there would be.
With the.
You're talking the approaching intersection?
Yeah, the one with the green box at the top there. Because those are pedestrian facilities, right? Those ADA ramps.
Oh, you're talking as a, as they cross the intersection?
Yes.
Oh, so, so this is what gets tricky. This would be, this, this crossing is going to be no different than any other bike crossing we have today. Whereas a cyclist goes through, it would be, you know, the cyclist has to yield to a pedestrian that crosswalk. If the cyclist is coming through, the pedestrian would have to yield to the cyclist in the intersection. You wouldn't normally sign that because we don't sign it anywhere else. That's also one of the reasons why putting them down there is because the rules are familiar. Putting them up onto the sidewalk and having them share the space, it gets a little more complicated, kind of like what we have there at the bridge at 170th. It's a little more complicated of an interaction. So we had to really think how we wanted them to work. Putting them down through here just makes it just like every other bike lane, pedestrian intersection crossing. So.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. The only thing I kind of caught my attention was the vegetation right there. Or the planting strips, excuse me, and, you know, line of sight. Hopefully, that's not too bushy of bushes. So the approaching cyclist doesn't see the pedestrian waiting on the street.
Yeah, our standards have sight distance requirements. And so that would most likely just be shrubs. Probably wouldn't be planting trees there or anything like that. So something low enough that people can see over.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Councilor Marshall.
I like the idea of more signs warning of pedestrian presence wherever possible.
And one of the things you have to be careful of with signs is sign pollution. The more signs you have, the chances are people start to ignore them. So many, they just don't see them anymore. And so you got to be careful not to have too many signs because you want them to pay attention to the signs, not start to ignore them because there's just so many of them. So there's a balance. So, yeah. But yes, we, we want to have signs where they're needed and where they're warranted. So.
Deputy Mayor.
And, and with the vertical delineators where they're needed and warranted, right? Not every intersection. It's. I just, I'm just going to say it. I hate the, the pollution that they create. And, you know, where we have such quality landscaping, all these tools to make our intersections more calm and beautiful, you know, safer. I just question the true value of them. So I'm just going to say, my, my least favorite thing that's come up, and I am just going to say, I, I really hope we don't overpollute our city with these vertical delineators. I know a lot of people are attached to them, but I'm just going to say, I personally think major intersections, make sure they're not too tall. They get dirty, they get run over. I question their value based on what I've seen and my comfort riding next to them on a bike. So like I, I find them less comfortable than having that space, but that's just me. So I'm just calling attention to my perspective on this, that I, if I didn't say it, I'd regret it. I don't think I have a council that's going to move with me on this, but I do want to say, I think less is more. Where, where they are really, really needed is where they should be. Overuse of them, I, 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 that's enough. Thank you.
No, no, I appreciate the comment. It, I actually do like that comment. I think I'm going to put some caveats in there that reflect what you say is that, you know, as directed by the city engineer versus required all the time.
Thank you. I really think that's important. Thank you.
Yeah.
John, are these recommendations around the delineators, are they coming from a particular standard or? You know, I know there's a lot of like proliferation of different standards for how to best do these sorts of things. Which standard are you drawing from or?
The manual, the MUTCD, the Manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices, is recommended a vertical separation between vehicles and cyclists. The number one recommendation is, is a elevated vertical separation. So what we've proposed in the standards. Another, the other recommendation is curbing or some other type of vertical delineation like these. The minimalist is the profile paint that we have called out. And so we're putting the profile paint everywhere we can. We're using the vertical delineators where we feel that a vehicle crossover is unnecessarily happening. We saw that so much at 170th and 68th where vehicles were just ripping out the delineators every day. And so we needed to do something to keep the cyclist safe because they were in danger of getting hit because people were not paying attention. And so that's why those were there. We experimented with vertical curb, with curbing on 73rd to see how that worked and pros and cons, you know, cars hit them, they get dislodged, they have to be fixed. They slow cars down. They certainly work. But again, you know, pros and cons. So we're trying to find the best solution that makes everyone as less, the least unhappy as they can be.
Thank you.
All right. Appendix F is our surface water design manual addendum. A few changes were made here as we called out the Kenmore Road Standards as equivalent to the King County Road Standards. That wasn't made clear in the design manual. I should clarify that if you do not recall, we, geez, we adopted the King County Surface Water Design Manual as our design guidelines for surface water. And we had to make some amendments and some changes to conform to what we want here in Kenmore. And so that's what the appendix does. So the drainage threshold adjustments, we increased the new impervious amount from 500 to 1,000 square feet. But then we added a 500-square-foot threshold requirement for new pollution generating impervious surfacing. We changed the allowable pipe size and type and drainage facility types to meet our maintenance group's needs. Any questions? Well, that's it. Next step for this is an ordinance for approval, later council date, hopefully in the next month or two, depends on when I can get it all completed. And that's it. Leave it to council for any other questions, comments?
I think we're good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Staff reports.
Just one, Mayor. Thank you very much. I just wanted to say thank you to the committee and to the staff who worked hard on the Step Open House. We had about 25 people in attendance, asking good questions and having good dialogue. So.
All right. Councilmember reports and comments. Councilmember Culver.
Happy Monday.
Councilmember Marshall.
Thanks to our staff and all the volunteers at the Oktoberfest celebration festivities this weekend. I, I did put in some hard work in an unofficial, informal capacity, something of a quality control nature with regard to that rotation, which was tapped from the keg. And I think the mayor put in some hard work in that regard, too.
Councilor Assam.
Go team. Yeah, I, just a couple of things. I did have the opportunity to attend the Step Housing Open House, the committee open house, which the presentation was terrific, I thought, and participation was thoughtful. I do want to, for anyone listening, I do want to call the attention to there being an online survey available so that the committee can continue to gather community input. And also the, the Step Housing YouTube panel discussion is also available on the Kenmore website if you wish to be informed before you fill out the online survey. And then two more housing relating things. One is that we do through NUSA here at the city have the Senior Housing Resource List available for anyone who might have somebody who could benefit from that. And then I also want to say that Camp United We Stand, who has been a well-regarded neighbor here in Kenmore for years, is looking for a new site. They've lost their site here in Kenmore due to other issues and they are looking for a new place for 2025, 2026 winters. So if anyone listening has a connection, I'd appreciate that. And then the other thing I've just noticed and gotten feedback from through the city email is that this start of the school year has really been challenging for our communities in terms of driving. So I just want to encourage folks to be mindful about obeying school bus rules, know what your school's drop-off and pickup sites are, and please be mindful of, of speed. We have a lot of anxious parents out there and kids, and I just want us to take good care of each other. All right, thanks.
Councilor Lutzus.
Just want to thank our staff. A lot of good stuff. So thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. It's, it's been, I don't know, for me, for, I think, it's been a big few weeks and, I just, we as a council, you know, we swear a note to uphold the Constitution, which the Constitution is for every person in our nation. And there are two constitut, two constitutional amendments, the first and the fourth, that I'm just going to read aloud. And I think the words are so simple and plain that I just need to say them out loud and for all of us to remember, not just council, but anyone who potentially listens. These are our rights and they must be upheld by all of us. First Amendment, Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press, or the right of the people to peacefully assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances. And I think we have witnessed a lot over the past year of attack on that. Fourth Amendment, the right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated and no warrants shall issue but upon probable cause, supported by oath or affirmation, and particularly describing the place to be searched and the persons or things to be seized. And all people who are present in this nation are deserving of these rights. There's no separation of what a person or people are. And it's incredibly important that at this time, we recognize that and give full attention to it and stand up for our rights because we are the many. And every person deserves these rights to be upheld. They are the foundation of our nation and it's, it's time for us to really give attention to that and how it is that we can, as the people, uphold those rights as they've been. I'm not going to go through a history lesson. I'm just going to say, now we really have to know what our rights are, what our constitution is and stand up for it. Thank you.
I want to thank the deputy mayor for the timely reminder. Try not to bring national stuff into chambers, but right now we are in some interesting times, to put it lightly. And I appreciate the reminder. It is important that we all recognize the fundamental rights that we are, that we have as a nation and that we fight to keep those and not let them get eroded slowly over time or quickly over time as we're seeing right now. I don't have anything to report that, well, there was, there was a, the joint transportation board's meeting last Friday where we got an update from Metro Sound Transit and the local FIFA organization, or I can't remember the exact name of the group, but they don't work for FIFA directly, but they're helping organize the Seattle area response and planning for FIFA. And I have to say, the transit agencies are doing quite a bit to try to prepare for the upcoming matches. They're hoping right now, apparently 50% of people that are going to Seahawks games are taking transit. They're hoping to get that up to 80% because of security issues, because there will be VIP, you know, like government, important representatives of governments there. They're not going to have the parking lot available, so they are really pushing for folks to take transit and they're taking extra preparations and will have many different ways for folks to get around. They will also at that time, hopefully, and this is actually a neat thing that, it's too bad they didn't do this without FIFA kind of forcing their hand, but they're going to be able, you'll be able to pay for your bus by just swiping your credit card when you get on the bus and the transfer will follow you around. So that's a massive improvement for everybody who's using the transit, our transit facilities and reduces a huge barrier for folks that just find getting an ORCA card or getting the, getting it activated on their phone to be a little complicated. So anyway, with nothing more to come before us, we are adjourned.